Good to proceed forward.
Thank you, Jack. Good morning, everybody. Thank you very much for your time this morning, coming together for the Audit Risk Committee. The first time, I think, we've run the Audit Risk Committee fully on Zoom. So just a couple of issues, just to remind you that this Zoom Audit Risk Committee is being livestreamed. And also, it's a little bit difficult for me at times to see everybody. So when people are seconding motions or wanting to speak, perhaps raise your hand or certainly make it known to me that you're wanting to second a motion or speak. So let's get underway. Thank you all once again. I have one apology, and that's for Mayor Baker. Are there any other apologies, any apologies for early departure? I hear there none, so I'm happy to move that the apology for Mayor Baker be accepted. It's been seconded by Graham Mitchell. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, carried. There have been no requests received for public participation at this meeting. Agenda item three, conflicts of interest. I always remind members of the Audit Risk Committee that this is a very important consideration in our minutes, or in our meetings, should I say. So I will just ask, has anybody got a conflict of interest for any items on our agenda today? I take silence as there being none. Thank you for that. We do not have any items of extraordinary business that I have received. So we can go straight to Agenda Item five, the confirmation of the minutes from our last meeting held on the 9th of December 2021. So I'm happy to move and open this discussion up for the confirmation of the minutes. Are there any corrections needed to these minutes? I see many people shaking their heads, so I'm not hearing anything. So I'll move that these minutes be recorded as a true and complete record of our meeting on the 9th of December 2021. Do I have a second? Thank you, Councillor Duncan. Been moved and seconded. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, carried. Agenda item 6.1, our Health and Safety Quarterly Report. Always a very important item on our Audit Risk Committee. So I will move that we receive this report for information. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Duncan, I see his hand there. So thank you, Councillor Duncan. It's been moved and seconded. The report is open for discussion. Gerry, are you or Angela going to cover off this quarter's report for us, please?
As we end today, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Gerry. Thank you, Ange. Look forward to you briefly covering this report off for us.
Good morning, everybody. And so in the report, we can see that we've had no lost time injuries again for the third quarter in a row, which is really great. Most of the injuries that we did have were all minor, just people tripping and scrapes and things like that. We're starting to see an increase in reporting again in this quarter after a drop in the previous quarters with some of the COVID restrictions and less people working out in the field. In the quarter, we did run our first wellbeing workshop with our new provider, Manawa Aura. And it was really, really well received by the staff who attended, with most saying that was the best wellbeing workshop they'd ever attended. So we are planning to run more of those once we can be back face-to-face with each other, which will be really important just to help staff get through and improve their wellbeing. EAP access has been the same as the previous quarter, with those attending presenting with stress in their personal life, followed by workplace relationships. And it's not unexpected due to the current COVID environment that we're all operating in. And we may expect to see an increase in the next quarter of people using that service.
Thank you very much, Angela. Any questions, the discussion on the report?
Yeah, if I could, Warren.
Thank you, Councillor Duncan, by all means.
Great. I'm referring to page 16, Wellington Water NEAM misses. A worker nicked a 240-volt underground service that was not shown on the plans. That seems really dodgy to me. Why wouldn't that service be shown on the plans? It doesn't strike me as being a moderate NEAM miss.
And so often, a lot of those services aren't on plans, which is a known risk for their organisation. It's a historic thing where a lot of the services just literally don't show up. And so they do know that, and it is, yeah, definitely one of their biggest risks.
Wow. Cool, thanks. And on page 17, the downograph shows no NEAM miss incidents for October 21, but the graph on the previous page lists two.
Oh, my apologies. That will just be me with a tardy entry. Sorry.
Thanks, thanks. It's me.
Can I just make a comment, Warren?
Please, Wendy.
Yeah. The, just for your information, if you may have read it in the paper anyway, Wellington Water has, in the last couple of weeks, not in this period, also had a death on site for a subcontractor. So that was in Wellington, so, but it's part of the Wellington Water family, if you like. So it's been obviously a big issue for Wellington Water. So it's a subcontractor, so it's a, you know, subcontractor to a contractor who contracts to Wellington Water. But those are issues that we do like to bring to your attention, not strictly in this quarter. But I just thought I would mention that.
Thank you, Wendy. We appreciate that. Any other comments or discussion? Certainly, from my point of view, I thought it was another excellent quarter. We're getting good levels of reporting. Thankfully, we're not getting any lost time injuries, but we are seeing the NEAM misses numbers sort of rise. So, you know, it's an area that's obviously going to need some close monitoring over the next quarter or two. And also, interesting to see that the EAP service is certainly necessary and being well-used at this current time. So. So thank you, Gerry, Angela and the team for the work that goes into putting this report together. So if there's no further discussion on it, it has been moved and seconded that we receive this report for information. So can I have all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, it's carried. Thank you, members. Agenda item 6.2, the update on the annual plan for 2022-2023. We are being asked to receive this report. Note the processes undertaken on the annual plan and the associated risks and issues. Also note that the council meeting on the 16th of December agreed that formal consultation is not required for the annual plan because there are no significant or material differences from the content of year two and the LTP. And finally, note that the annual plan is required to be adopted and the rates resolution passed by the 30th of June. So I'm very happy to move in that direction. Do I have a second, please? Seconded, I think, by Councillor Turin. Thank you for that. Open for discussion, but before we do that, if we can just pass to Samuel. Samuel, are you going to speak on this paper briefly for us?
Morning, Nikoto. So as the paper suggests, it's an information paper just to update the elected members in the committee on the process we've taken so far with the developing the annual plan. And as the paper mentions, the decision by council on the 16th of December agreed that we would not consult on the annual plan as there was nothing triggered that required us to consult and that officers would manage the budgets internally. And so that's the stage that we're up to now, where we're working through cost pressures and risks. And we will work with the LT on that before going to TPK on the 2nd of June. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Samuel. Councillor Morrell.
Councillor Morrell. I got you. Thank you for that, Chair. Through you, just for my own business, I'm getting heaps of price increases coming at us in left, right and centre. Are we, with the known costs that are coming through or the possible increases, are we confident that we can absorb and hold it?
Can I pass that on? Sorry.
Yeah, I'll speak to that. I think that's always a problem, Councillor Morrell. And it's a risk. So, but on the other side, particularly in our capital programme, we're seeing quite an increase in prices there. But also, we are unable to do quite a lot of work at the moment as well because of workforce issues around COVID. So the whole programme is having a bit of a rejig for those two issues. It will mean eventually we'll have to correct the capital programme in particular. And we've got OpEx pressures as well. But that's been our commitment to keep within the envelope for next year. And yes, it'll be a stress and a strain in patches, but business is going slower at the moment as well. And I don't know that we're, you know, I think that will continue into next year. So, yeah, a whole lot of competing forces, none of them particularly easy to manage. But we think we're still confident that we can manage within the financial envelope provided for.
Thank you, Wendy. Any other questions or discussion on this important paper? As I say, I can't see everybody all at once. Thank you, Councillor Turin.
Thank you. Yeah, just to follow up, Wendy, on the question from Councillor Morrell. In light of the decision by council already to not go back out for consultation on the annual plan and maintain it within current budgets, in the event that because of those rising cost pressures, including inflation, and then I see noted as well, there's the risk around faster acceleration of the OCR than we'd anticipated. If we do get to a stage where it becomes untenable to be able to go ahead without a serious discussion, at the very least, of the rates level that we'd already agreed to, given that decision we've already made, what will that process look like? And will that cause many issues in the delivery of the annual plan?
So we strike the rates in June, so we conclude that. So there is no ability mid-year to re-strike the rates. So we just have to manage those costs. So, yeah, those cost pressures will exist, but we'll have to manage them in-house, either defer projects in the capital programme. That's not really a risk at the moment. We are spending on capital in particular. Our operating probably presents more risks for management within that. But even there, you know, one of our biggest costs is our workforce costs, and we're struggling to recruit. So there's more issue that we'll be unable to deliver services at the speed which we would normally deliver. Then that's probably as much a risk as some of the financial issues. But the rates level won't, can't change within the year.
And just to follow up on that, thank you, Wendy. And in the event that we do see that happen, and there does have to be extent to, there does have to be reprioritisation, do you anticipate if the degree of reprioritisation will be able to be dealt with entirely at an operational level? Or this has to result in some decisions coming back to the council table, re-looking at other decisions we may have already made?
There will be potentially some decisions for council to make, particularly as we're facing, because we're also facing simultaneously some growth pressures. So if, for example, we're successful in the Infrastructure Acceleration Fund, we will have to probably reprioritise the order of some of the work that we've got in there, in particular water, some of the water infrastructure work. So that would require a council decision to change the order of some of that because it spreads over several years. So we haven't, well, number one, we don't know if we've been successful or not in that application process. And the kind of programming work hasn't been done, therefore, on all of that. So there are potentially some issues that will come back to council. But certainly during the quarterly reporting framework that we've already got, we'll all refer you to any of that.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Councillor Turin. No further discussion on this paper. All right, it's been moved and seconded, so all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, carried. Thank you. Agenda item 6.3, which is the External Auditor's EY Audit Plan for the coming year ending 30th of June 2022. We are being asked to receive the report for information and approve the acceptance of the proposed audit plan. I'm happy to move in that direction. Do I have a second, please?
Yes.
Thank you, Graham Mitchell. That's been moved and seconded. Our covering paper has been put together by Peter Anderson and Joe. Either of you wanting to speak to this before I pass it over to EY?
We'd just pass it to EY.
EY. Thank you, Joe. So thank you, Sam, for your audit plan in a timely manner. It's always good to get it at this time of the year. So we look forward to you briefly highlighting the points in there before we open it up for discussion. Floor is yours, Sam.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning to the committee. It's a pleasure to be here on behalf of the Auditor General to present our plan for the audit of Porro City Council's financial statements and performance information for the June 22 year. On page 24 of your papers, the executive summary provides an overview of our plan, listing the areas of focus, which will be familiar to the committee from previous audits. And these are elements of the audit where we have assessed the greatest risk of material misstatement or otherwise have significance to the council's financial statements and service performance, such as infrastructure assets, rates revenue and service performance. Council's biennial evaluation of its water assets is underway. Central Government's ongoing work programme of Three Waters requires additional focus on these valuations this cycle. Across our portfolio of council audits and discussions with the OAG, we continue to monitor the Three Water reforms and considerations for the 22 audit, including considering Porro's practice against other councils that EY audits. The pace of change for Three Waters is quite high, and uncertainty remains as to the timing and exact nature of the reforms. We expect council will disclose its assessment of the expected impact to the extent it's known in its annual report. And our audit report will include an explicit reference to Three Waters and refer readers to the council's disclosure. This is similar to what was done in the LTP. On page 29, we've identified one new area of focus being DataScape, which was implemented in the 22 year. As the committees are aware, this project represents significant change to a key system supporting council's operations and reporting. And IT projects present a range of organisational and operational challenges, let alone the COVID environment that council has implemented this in. The focus of our procedures is on the integrity of the transfer of council's existing records, which underpin the annual report, and the establishment of new business processes and a supporting and control environment after the transition. The project Go Live was deferred from FY21 to FY22, and our FY22 fees remain as agreed with council for that year, with the exception of a deferral for the scope of work for the transition that followed the deferred timing. For the benefit of councillors, on page 31, we have links to some of the Auditor General's recent publications on relevant areas of interest. These have been shared with management and will serve as a reference point as we work through our audit with council. And our 2021 audit report was qualified in respect of two performance measures relating to waters. We've commenced discussions with the Appointed Auditors of Wellington Water and Management to understand the progress made in enhancing the reliability of these measures. But at this stage, we don't have a view as to whether that qualification will be removed for the 22 year and will bring that information to the committee when that view is known. So they were my covering comments for our paper. The focus of presenting the plan is to ensure that the committee has an understanding of the key areas of focus and that those areas are suitably complete. So welcome any questions from the committee or feedback on our proposed areas of focus for the 22 order.
Thank you, Sam. Most comprehensive document. We appreciate that. And thank you for drawing our attention to the highlights. So open for any questions or discussion.
If I may.
Thanks, Councillor Duncan.
Yeah, thanks very much. It's a great report. I was intrigued, though, with, on page 24, DataScape only rating a medium focus. I would have thought that would have been a high focus. Can you explain that for me?
Yeah, thanks, Councillor Duncan. I suppose we have the benefit of hindsight in completing our procedures, which occur after management's own procedures to get satisfied with both the readiness for migration and the identification of possible issues. That allows us to be quite targeted in our focus to where it presents the risk of material misstatement in the financial statements, which is the primary element of our audit. I think you make an interesting point. The impacts of DataScape on the council's control environment are likely to be quite pervasive. And with any IT change project, the ability for an entity to get from change mode to business as usual and embed a robust control environment is quite important. And so without prejudging our work, we expect that, you know, there'll inevitably be items relating to the control environment post-transition that we might report as control observations at the conclusion of our audit. But we don't expect from our discussions with management to date that whilst it's challenging, that there's a very high risk of material misstatement in the financial statements.
Any other questions or discussion? Just to remind you, I can't, on my screen, can't necessarily see you all. So please feel free to, Graham.
Graham here. I'm going to go for a chocolate fish award first in relation to Sam's report. And just on page 21, the purpose of this report refers to June 2021 and needs to be changed. You with me, page 21?
Right.
Under purpose at the top of the page.
Yes. Thank you, Graham. Well spotted.
Thank you.
There speaks an experienced auditor.
The Wellington Water was one of the things I was going to, and Sam has referred to that. So obviously, that's going to be monitored closely over the next few months. The other one was the DataScape. And on page 29, we refer to an amount of work in progress of 2.6. And I presume that's what we are seeing is our costs outstanding that we have to contribute to, which will come on to the balance sheet at some stage between now and 30th of June. But there's a different number further in the DataScape report. You're nodding your head, Warren, so.
Yeah, Graham, that 2.6 is the balance of the work in progress at June last year. So I would imagine what's in the DataScape report is what has been spent up to date. So it'll be a higher number.
Okay, thank you for that.
And the other is, one in the reports, a combination of both capital and OpEx, where this is a capital space, which is the issue that we've got to resolve about the applying the AFR standards in relation to how we recognise DataScape.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you, Warren. That's all I had at this stage.
Thank you, Graham. Any further questions or discussion? Not hearing or seeing any. So just to remind you that we've been asked to receive this audit plan for our information and also approve the acceptance of the proposed audit plan. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, it's carried. Thank you for that. Thank you, Sam. We wish you and the team good luck with the coming audit. And we certainly will look forward to your final report on completion, but also an update at our next meeting in June. Agenda item 6.4 is our regular Treasury Investment and Liability Management Quarterly Update. So we've been asked to receive the report for information for the period ending 31st of December 2021. Agenda item 6.4, I'm happy to move in that regard. Do I have a second, please? Thank you, Councillor Ford. It's been moved and seconded. Just before we open it up for discussion, if I can ask Zach to make one or two comments on this quarter's Treasury report. Morning, Zach, and thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair. So the report in front of you relates to 31st of December 2021 period. So at 31st of December, council was fully compliant with its policy parameters under the Investment and Liability Management Policy. Point seven in the report outlines the transaction law, transactions which occurred in the Treasury space during the quarter, the particular quarter. And as attached to the report, you can find the Treasury dashboard produced with PWC, which shows the key criteria under the policy framework. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Open for discussion. Perhaps if I started off. Zach, Councillor Turin mentioned earlier sort of increasing sort of OCR. And it's interesting to note in this December report that our average cost of funds at 2.58% is a little lower than what it was at June 2021, which was 2.68%. What's your sort of prediction? And I know it's not necessarily sort of part of this report, but, you know, we will see that number sort of increase, I would imagine, over the next few quarters. And is that going to give rise to sort of any issues in terms of remaining within our requirements?
Thank you, Chair. So there's probably two veins to this comment. One is the investment and liability policy itself. So the framework that we developed to operate in actually looks at our long-term debt and debt servicing. So we take it out at different maturities to actually balance the effect of any immediate or short-term effects of interest rate. So we take it out at different maturities to actually balance the effect of any immediate or short-term effects of interest rate curves. So the OCR is predicted to go up potentially two or three times within the current year. So a lot of our debt is drawn down in the medium and long term to prevent any short-term risk to council, to mitigate those swift curves. The second point is we do regular updates with P W C around what our forward profile looks like. And when we construct our reports in the annual plan and annual report, there's also a risk percentage built in to cover that. So it is something we regularly update and build in to it. It is something we will face as the cost pressures as the OCR changes and there are cost increases. But we believe, at least for the immediate to short term, that they are provided for in the current policy framework.
Fantastic. Thanks, Zach. Thank you for that. I'm sure that's helpful to councillors. Any further questions on treasury discussion? Councillor Vega, see your hand up. Thanks. Ross, you're on mute.
Jack, so I mean Zach, sorry. Short to medium to, what does that mean?
So throughout the policy, bear with me one second, I will just bring that up. For our interest rate summary, we differentiate as what is referred to buckets. So we have a three to zero to three year term, three to seven and seven to fifteen. So that's broadly how we differentiate into short, medium and long-term interest rate risk.
Okay, so medium is three to seven, short zero to three. Okay. So you're saying that we're reasonably well-covered for up and, you know, for seven years out?
The, I won't give a personal. So the framework is presented to mitigate any immediate short-term risk or changes to the OCR. So the way it's designed is the funding buckets have varying terms and frequencies of the drawdown to mitigate any short-term changes, understanding we have been at historically low interest rates for the last few years. So there is an upward trend in interest rates, which we will have to manage through there and likely an additional cost to council. But the policy framework looks to mitigate that immediate short-term change to council.
Can I just add one thing here? So we're about to borrow some more. So that one is actually out on the thirty years. So it's the pricing of the interest rates is out significantly longer this, for what we need to buy and what we need to buy in the next couple of years. We're looking at buying and out into the longer term. Because again, that's got the pricing and of the interest over the longest phase. So it's balancing between short-term borrowing and long-term borrowing.
Thank you, Joe. Any more comments, questions?
Yes, Warren.
Councillor Duncan, thank you.
Page forty nine, Zach, the funding summary table there. I'm intrigued to know why the actuals only add up to ninety nine percent.
Thank you, councillor. So the report obviously rounds to the closest full percentage. So I imagine it's a rounding error that we can look to correct.
Thanks.
Well spotted, councillor Duncan. All right, if there's no further discussion, thank you, Zach. A lot more interest and always lots of interest in treasury, but a little bit more focused in the current environment. With everybody sort of aware of the increasing interest rates and the impact it's likely to have. So thank you, Zach, for your work. This has been moved and seconded, but we note this report for information. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, carried. Thank you. Agenda item six point five, risk and assurance quarterly report update. We're being asked to receive the report for information. Note that the twenty one, twenty two risk and assurance plan is on track. And finally, to agree to approve the risk and assurance charter. So I'm happy to move in that regard. Do I have a second, please? Thank you, councillor Duncan, being moved and seconded. Alison, can I ask you to briefly address this report before we open up for discussion? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Look, I'll take it as read, it's a pretty straightforward report this quarter. I'll just make a couple of points. As I said, the plan's currently on track, but I may see some slippage over the next few months as I am having to defer a little bit of audit work now due to the current COVID environment. So I'll just keep an eye on that and it may roll into the next program. And then the other thing, just noting that the charter is there for your review in line with the committee's terms of reference. I've made some very minor updates to it. And it's based on sort of best practice international standards. Happy to take any questions.
So Alison, those minor updates not worthy of mentioning, are they sort of what, and just tidying up the wording or?
Yeah, basically it was called the internal audit charter and in the last few years I've changed, you know, to risk and assurance to just take in. So really, it's just updating the title.
All right. Thank you for, thank you for that. I think we had some discussion.
Graham here. Just the the risk and assurance program for the rest of the year. You just made some reference to the fact that you were likely to get there, but it might be a wee bit slower than because of COVID. Is that our understanding?
That's right. Look, I always load it with a bit more work than I probably get through, but there's just a couple of audits. So the health and safety site audits that Angela and I've been doing. Look, they're just conducive to doing them in person and we're trying to limit our movements at the moment. And we've got, you know, not a lot of staff in the office all at the same time. And then there's one other one that I will be doing in next area, which is sort of reviewing resource and building consent efficiency improvements. And again, that's just conducive to having people in the office and doing it face to face. So we may just delay those until, you know, we're back to a little bit of normality. But I have no shortage of work to get on with in the meantime.
Sure. And in terms of those projects, though, do we anticipate completing those by the end of June or by the end of September or?
Look, it just depends how long we're all out of the office for really. Yeah, by the end, I would like to think by the end of the calendar year for sure. So if I don't get them all done this year, this financial year, I'll just probably push them out into the next program for the next twelve months.
Thank you.
Alison, also on the open audit issues, that's showing a pretty impressive position there that we're sort of on top of dealing with with those audit issues raised in the past. Is that a fair read of those tables on page fifty three?
That is a fair read, but I don't want to oversell what I've been doing as well. I haven't been doing any pure audit work, which is where a lot of those recommendations come from. So I've been doing more in the assurance space and risk and, you know, on the today base safety audit, which I'm tracking those recommendations. They're just a bit separate to my normal track.
Any other questions or discussion? Not hearing, so it's been moved and seconded. Just to remind you that we are approving the risk and assurance charter suitably amended. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, carried. Thank you, Alison. Agenda item six point six, data scape update, being referred to on a couple of agenda items today. This is always an important agenda item. So we've been asked as an audit risk committee to receive the report for information. I'm happy to move in that regard. Do I have a second, please? Thank you, councillor Turin. So it's been moved and seconded just before opening it up for questions and discussions. Can I ask you, Joe, to just address where things are at with this important project?
So this is the report as at the twenty eighth of February. So we've now been on data scape since the fourth of October. We have successfully run now two rates installments and also the associated applying penalties, et cetera. In relation to, we have, we are still working through the transition. So we've now completed, we're in the final stages of the reconciliations and for audit purposes to sign that off. We are looking to implement the customer request management and my power. So we're looking at that in May, to implement in May. That is behind on the schedules, but we did that on the lessons that we learnt from the finance implementation and especially around the user acceptance testing and making certain that we actually run through one of the issues that we, because it's new releases coming all the time, we want to know that all the product of customer and my power is there and all the interfaces before we actually go live. So we're doing a lot more testing at the next stage. We've now done two month-end reports out of data scape. We are now looking at, and that's predominantly been done, that has been completely done in the finance space. We're now looking at the toolset to be able to roll out the management reporting out to the business. So it's still journey, but we are making positive steps. But that's why we're reporting it. It's amber across, not green.
Thank you, Joe. Massive piece of work. And pass on our thanks from the Audit and Risk Committee to the team for the work. This is going to have, once fully implemented, a very positive impact on the operations of council. Joe, just under issues, can I understand what is meant by that last comment? Scope for the next phases is known only at a high level?
So this is that we're replacing all, so the first stage is replacing everything that is in tech one. So we're able to turn off tech one. Data scape gives us significantly more capability. But again, data scape's a product that's still being developed. So we've got the high-level roadmap for data scape, but the detail below is still to be worked through.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, discussions? Please speak up. Joe, I think you've covered all the questions off. Thank you for that. So it's been moved and seconded that we received the report for information. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, carried. All right, so I would now like to move a motion that we go into a publicly excluded session and that Casey Webster and Sam Nicole from Ernst &amp; Young be permitted to remain at the meeting. So I'm happy to move in that regard. Do I have a second, please? Thank you, councillor Morrell. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favour that we go into publicly excluded session, please say aye.